Good evening and welcome to the Town of Southbridge Joint Planning and Development Subcommittee Town Council Meeting on Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P. M. We're in the Veterans Meeting Room. Please note that it's possible the form of the Town Council may be present and discuss the agenda items, but voting rights shall be limited to subcommittee members in attendance. This meeting is both visually and audio recorded. First order of business is the call to order, second order of business is roll call. Councillor Kelly?
Present.
Councillor Marquetti?
Present.
Citizen Member Larishell?
Present.
Citizen Member Bernard Owen is excused, and I'm the Chair John Daniel present. Very good. Item number three, have you discussed whether to approve entering into a contract with Cartographic Associates Incorporated for mapping maintenance of the town's tax maps? Entertain a motion to recommend approval to Town Council.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a regular maintenance proposal that we have to sign relative to our G I S mapping that we share with the assessors. So I guess in the past they've been signed by former Town Manager McCall, Inter-Town Manager Blanchard. So this is just for us for the service contract for this year from January to December of twenty-four. So we paid the bill and just make sure we sign the proposal, which is asking authorization to sign it.
Very good. Any questions at the table? Councillor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is for the assessors so they can set the tax rate?
No, it's the mapping for the G I S. They do in conjunction with like vision appraisal and all that, but it's the G I S mapping. That shows all the maps, so if somebody pulls up a property, you can pull up along with a property cod on the map, it will show you the, whatever G I S is. So. So it has nothing to do with setting the rate, tax rate, it's just the mapping of the town. So you can pull up a piece of property or whatever, multiple properties and take a look at how it looks on the map in relation to the street layouts, where the house is. A lot of towns use it. It's a very valuable tool to be able to get information when you're doing, in the planning department as well. Fire Department uses it, the D P W uses it for layouts of either driveways or properties, so.
Okay.
That's right. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you for you. So this is all digital?
It is, yeah.
All right, so there's, is it maintained on a server in town or is it maintained in the cloud somewhere?
I would say this one's in a cloud, this is not on a town server, but I can verify that information for you. Most of those are cloud-based, but I will verify.
Right, and a lot of G I S is owned by one software company and we just, we're buying the right to use it within our system.
And how long have we been doing, doing this, doing, doing it all?
I believe it's, this is the third year because Will was appointed when he first did this and Will's been gone about like three years. So Will had started with this with Eric Brumsey, I believe, they had done it together. Put the G I S mapping, it was a grant for this.
Was there a mapping policy or program in place prior to it?
I have to get that further information on that. I can definitely find out for you, but.
I'm just curious.
I don't know.
Is what?
Yeah, as far as that, I don't know if they were using the G I S mapping at the time, but I can verify that.
And, okay.
Peg unfortunately is on vacation, she would probably have more of an issue with that, but I can get that from her. So it's.
What's up? Very good. Anyone else at the table? Anyone in the audience? Very good. All those in favor? opposed? unanimous of all present? Okay, item number four, is a presentation and update on the status of projects at the Southbridge Innovation Center. Tonight, I'm pleased to say that we have Chip Norton here. Chip is the Managing Director of Franklin Realty Advisors L. L. C. He's, he's in charge of what's going on down there. One of their projects is the Southbridge Innovation Center, otherwise known as the old A O campus. Chip, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you Subcommittee for giving the opportunity to, to come here tonight. What I wanted to do is brief you folks on kind of a quick history, what we've accomplished and then what the remaining development plan is for the park, as well as discuss a couple initiatives related to the development that we're working with the town on.
Maybe can you give the voice?
By way of background for some of you folks that don't know, the total complex is one point two million square feet, hundred and fifty acres, of which approximately seventy to eighty is developed and the remaining is woods and ledge area. We've completed about six hundred thousand of the square feet of the, of the development. I'll outline you, outline for you tonight, the remaining buildings and what our plans are. Right now, we have an operating hotel conference center, medical office with seven hills, a couple of manufacturing buildings and our first housing project, which was completed February of last year. Our housing component, it would call Southbridge Mills. It effectively is a residential part of the Innovation Center, as I mentioned a second ago. Forty-eight units were delivered in the early part of two thousand and twenty-three. And we've been working on four additional buildings, really two projects, phase two, phase three, that will generate two hundred and sixty-six additional units. We then have left one large building. For those of you A O historians, that was the Arrow Building until they got acquired by Three M in two thousand and ten and they exercised their right to terminate the lease upon purchase. They basically got distributed around the country and had other empty buildings that Three M controlled. And those of you may know that the Three M mask, which was popular during COVID and still is, was actually manufactured here by Arrow. So we could have become the mass capital of the country, but it didn't work out that way. We have about four hundred people currently employed within the park to date between myself and some other building owners. We put about a hundred and fifty million dollars into the park, the largest investment, of course, the Hotel Conference Center. And then with the three remaining projects, we projected another hundred and sixty million of investment will be required. On the vacant land, we've been working with a third-party developer to build a two-to-four megawatt on-ground solar farm. Basically, we cover the old A O landfill, which was closed in the mid nineties. That electricity most likely would be sold back into the grid and we're just working through the feasibility study on that now. Currently, the complex generates about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in real estate tax revenue and personal property taxes. What we have planned is, is to deliver quality housing below market rents with the, with the residential that's in the books and we hope that we can entice manufacturing or some sort of that type of industry to the last building thirty-five optical. So colored here are the buildings left to be developed. You can see the Hotel Conference Center at the top of your screen. And then the additional buildings in white are primarily manufacturing that have been completed and, and sold in some cases. The orange building is twenty-five, thirty-five K Street, twenty-five really being the majority of that property. It's currently permanent for a hundred and twenty-seven units and forty, fifty optical across the river, fifty I'm sure you all know, which is a multi-story concrete building. Those two buildings combined, we generated a hundred and thirty-nine residential units. And as I said, the last building in green, thirty-five optical. We're currently marketing for manufacturing warehouse distribution as well as data center. We tried to market fifty optical drive for years in the late like seventeen through two thousand and nineteen as a data center because it's perfectly built for that. It's got the sufficient ceiling height on four floors. It certainly got the structural capacity. It has a three hundred and fifty pound per square foot capacity, which is more than enough to accommodate a data center. And then finally, our real advantage, or two other advantages are a power plant, which now was cogeneration, which we redeveloped in two thousand and seventeen, which we have the ability to expand and basically accommodate a large user of electricity. And then in two thousand and sixteen, finalized last year, the property is now listed on the National Register, which allows us to access federal and state tax incentives, which helps brings cost, capital cost out or offset capital costs for these projects. So we tried to market that. We thought if we have below market for this area, energy costs with the tax credits, that would be pretty attractive financially. The market for data centers has been primarily in the south, southwest and southeast, where there's cheaper electricity. Electricity is the biggest cost for these data centers, as you can well imagine. And in other markets where the electricity is sixty-eight cents a kilowatt hour versus us north of twenty, the economics just don't make any sense. Last year, we, we got approached by a couple of consultants who felt that the New England market may in fact start being a home for some of these data centers because of the explosion of A I, but also some regional customers would prefer their stores to be in their backyard versus somewhere else in the country. So we're gearing back up that marketing plan and we'll probably hit the ground in the next couple of months and take a shot at thirty-five optical. It's not quite the same as, as fifty, but it's got about a hundred and forty thousand feet of floor space that can be reinforced where necessary and carry the load for a data center. So that will be another approach we'll take on that building over the next year or two. On the affordable housing, basically what you're delivering is a very high-quality unit for below-market rates. And you can do that because these deals are heavily financed with grants and incentives, which allows you to offset the cost and in turn charge less expensive rent than the area. From a financing perspective, you only finance about twenty percent of your project cost. The other eighty, as I said, is incentive grants, historic tax credits, state credits and federal credits. So that allows you to, to deliver a high-quality product at a lower price. We're averaging about five percent of our units are eighty percent of fair market. Seventy-five percent are at sixty percent and twenty percent at thirty percent. For twenty-five K Street, the number to the right is the contract price, which then would be offset by the deduction or credit. So the contract price for a one-bedroom is fourteen hundred and of course, it's sixty percent. It'd be sixty percent of that under the Affordable Housing Program and that's the way it would work for the two-bedroom. In the three-bedroom, you can see thirty-five percent of our allocation is two-bedroom and then fifteen percent three-bedroom. These projects in this area are primarily designed to attract workers, people that have a job and that are looking for just a higher-quality unit than they can afford elsewhere.
Mr. Chairman? Why he was on that slide going back to like, for instance, the sixty percent one-bedroom units, fourteen hundred dollars? Is the actual rent fourteen hundred dollars or sixty percent?
No, it's roughly sixty percent. The math, it's, a one-bedroom probably about seven to eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
And these rents are set by the state or HUD, excuse me, so these are not set by the developer. I went by the median income, so Southbridge fits into Worcester County, of course, the median income in twenty-four for a single worker is eighty-eight thousand. Southbridge is disadvantaged, being part of Worcester County, they actually don't do a different allocation or a different analysis for a town like Southbridge, which obviously you're up against a city like Worcester where the, where the wages are much higher. So, but the rents should be adjusted adequately to reflect the difference in, in income for a single worker. This is twenty-five K Street. Very unusual building as the, some of you were on the planning, planning board committee and when we went through to get our permits on this, it was, it was quite a struggle because the building is actually sits on an island surrounded by the Quintabog Pond and then the river on one side and the spillway on the other. So it's going to have some real challenges as it relates to construction logistics and then of course, life and safety issues. The planning board required us to add a culvert over the spillway as really an emergency access into the center of the building. So through the process, the permit process, there were some things added that will make the building more accessible. The other aspect of the building that makes it challenging is it's wide. And so it's too wide for a residential project as it sits. So those green areas are basically open-air courtyards that will be cut through the center of the building. So with that, you can now, you know, have units with windows and then also in some cases, direct access to the outside. This is going to be a pretty spectacular project when built with the water and the interior courtyards. It's going to be, it's going to be a showcase. We've been working at getting this approved for funding for a couple of years, which is the way the process works in the state. The state credit, the state funding mechanisms are highly sought after and you, you have more demand than supply. So usually your project gets kicked around for a year or two before it finally gets, gets its final approval. We have approval, which we just got a month or two ago, to submit our best and final, which is due the end of September. And the fact that we're in the round, which they call a mini-round, I think there's a very good chance that we'll get, funding will be approved. That would be a construction start next year, second quarter for the delivery at the end of two thousand and twenty-six. If we're not approved, that will get kicked out another six months to a year. But I think we're highly, we're anticipating that we're going to get the approval and move the project forward. What helped, obviously, which you all read, was the five billion dollar governor's housing bill and that's going to flood a bunch of money into these kinds of projects. So that's, that's good news for our future projects also here in the park. This is forty, fifty. This is fifty optical, which is really the, the major part of the project. The majority of the units will go into this building with I think ten or twelve units going into the smaller forty optical. We're talking to the town right now about an aspect of all of these projects, which is a requirement that the town makes some sort of financial contribution. The state agency H L C adopted this approach five or six years ago under the concept of the theory that the state's putting all this money into these communities and that the community should be giving something back or participating in some manner, shape or form, but also would show the community is in support of the project. So it's now become a standard for every project have the town contribution. On five K Street, the first project we did, the town contributed basically the building permit fees of about a hundred and sixty thousand as its contribution. On twenty-five K Street, the town agreed to allocate a portion of it, the improvements to the East Main Street project, which I guess is about to start. And that was a four hundred thousand dollar allocation, which, which H L C approved, or it seems they've approved, they haven't rejected it and now we're in the final round. So our, our belief at this point is that concept was adopted. So for forty and fifty, as I understand, the East Main Street project, the scope hasn't changed that much, but the costs have grown. I think back when we used that for twenty-five K Street, I think the budget was just over a million dollars. I think Peg told me it's somewhere around three and a half, a range. But am I correct? The scope hasn't really changed, the concept hasn't changed. The scope may have grown some or just everything came in more expensive.
Well, it's a combination of different things, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the scope has changed, but the majority of it.
Yeah.
We've added some improvements in the area of Thomas variety and sidewalk areas and that area.
Yeah. So we're going to try to take the same approach. D P W is generating an analysis of, an allocation of that project work that would go to, run to the benefit of forty and fifty optical. So we're waiting to see that. I think it actually just came out today. And if, if it, if it looks like it's, it will fit the objective, then we'll use that. Obviously with Town Council's approval, we would take that approach with our submission in October for forty, fifty.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're saying is money we're already spending would be able to be applied toward what you need from the state for that, that.
What the project needs, yeah.
Right. It's money we're already spending.
Correct. It's just a, it's a, just an allocation of, it's no additional dollars out of the town's budget or pocket. It's an allocation of costs that are already been committed to. I don't know how the town's financing it, but it's been, it's been addressed one way or another, so. But no, it's, it's using the same money, basically. So our suggestion to the town is that the allocation, because there's room in the budget, be bumped up to seven hundred thousand under the theory that this project is larger than twenty-five K Street and also to give the proposal a little more punch when we present it to the state. On thirty-five optical, this is our last large building, just under two hundred thousand feet. As I mentioned, this was Arrow's main headquarters for years, where they fabricated safety products for the face, ears and mouth. We're marketing for manufacturing, either that warehouse distribution or data center. I mean, this building's been on the market and marketed for about twelve years now at this point. I think the challenge we have is location. Southbridge is still considered for most of the central mass manufacturers, not in the core area, not where the workforce is. We're far cheaper than the Worcester market. Worcester market's at eight or ten bucks triple net. We're on the market at five bucks triple net, hoping that price will make a difference. And then we've got the power opportunity. So for a manufacturer that has a huge power requirement, we would be a very good fit. So we're going to market, you know, directed at those kinds of users that have a high energy requirement under the theory that they'll have a hard time getting that requirement met elsewhere and also it'll be much more costly. From these three projects, estimated permit fees of about a million dollars. Annual additional tax revenue based on valuation of what these buildings would be worth completed is probably another four hundred and twenty-five thousand on top of the current seven hundred and fifty thousand that we're paying. And then the economic benefits of the area have not been determined, but obviously there'll be improved retail spending and improvement of the local economy based on bringing in, on the two hundred and sixty-six units, you're probably talking three to three hundred and fifty people at the end of the day. The other major initiative that we're working on with the town, which is a master plan redevelopment of the, of the private areas within the park, walkways, roads, access points, that sort of thing. The upgrades are in the range of nine million dollars. As I said, it would be the creation of walking biking trails, access to the Quintabog, roadway and bridge upgrades, some additional public amenities and then network, greater pedestrian access and network within the, within the park. Some of this work is been, we will be required to do as part of our permits. From the town, I bought the permits for twenty-five K Street and the permits for forty and fifty and I can go over some of that when we have some visuals here. But as I said, the work is a combination of major intersection work at Mechanic Street and Optical Drive, which is our main entrance, sidewalk, pedestrian connections within the park, including upgrades to the road and access and then roadway and bridge upgrades. We have, we have really three bridges, two of which are in pretty good shape, a third which is extremely old. We'll need a major, major work done to it. You can't see this very well, sorry, but the, the picture above is that's the Mechanic Optical Drive rework to open up the access point into the park and also get a more clearer throughway for cars, not returning into the park. This came up as a subject in our approvals for forty, fifty. Traffic studies were done and some of these upgrades were, were suggested by the traffic engineers. The one open issue was whether this should, this intersection at, once we're fully developed, should be signaled or not. And what we agreed to do is that we'll, we'll see how the development plays out. If there's a requirement to signal, then we'll, we'll obviously do that if necessary. A big part of the, the plan is a, is a safe interconnection pedestrian walkway. It would start from the hotel up to your left and go down East Main Street, cut into the park, over the Quintabog River and then along the river and back up the other side, crossing over the main bridge and back to the hotel. This too was a, was a requirement or a point of interest for the planning board as part of completing the residential development. I will say the last couple of years, we've got a lot more public use of the, of the park, which I think is great. We're not restricting it. We don't put gates down or anything at night. Most of this activity is during the day, but there are known people that come into the park now, park, walk their dogs, have a picnic, whatever the case may be. So it's kind of starting to develop almost a public, public area for the town, which I think is great. It's a great start to what we want to try to do here. This is a breakdown of the potential costs in various sources. Some of these sources are monies that the town of Southbridge would pursue for other projects, which we understand. One is a little tricky is Housing Works Infrastructure, which would be our, kind of our main funding. That just got approved or recently approved as part of the bond bill for residential and it's specifically for enhancing, improving infrastructure for residential projects. So from the town's perspective, if they have other large residential projects that needed infrastructure work, certainly that would, that would fit the bill. But we certainly do, given the size of the, the number of units and the amount of infrastructure that has to be done to go along with the project. The second source is Mass Trails Program, which frankly, I don't know much about, but I think it's pretty much, maybe you folks went after that part of the bike trail and, and all that, the rail trail. part of the bike trail and all that, the rail trail funding.
We just got denied because we just were in a.
You were, yeah?
We were denied, we had approved, applied for a hundred thousand dollars to do some improvements on our heritage trail. And because we were already sufficient, they turned us down.
Gotcha. The other opportunity on the state side is, is Mass Works, which we've done, I've used before in Worcester. And is obviously an important source of infrastructure capital for the town, so that would be something that, you know, year to year, we'd be working with the town on what their priority projects were. Hopefully, we would be viewed as important for the town, given the, the final project and what we're trying to do. On the federal side, we have EDA, which I think the town also has applied for. The other opportunity is a federal earmark, where we would actually get money in the 26 budget earmarks specific for the project. The town and the project have huge support from, from Richie Neal. Our, our gentleman on the house side, talks from the outside. And then Ed Mark, who's been a good friend of this project. And so we've got some pretty good federal support, working with the town to access money from either EDA or an earmark. And the plan would be, we've worked with the town, finalize the master plan this fall. Get the approvals we need, which I'll discuss in a second, and start submitting February sort of timeframe on Mass Trails. But then Mass Works is on an annual program of spring. And I think Housing Works is on the same, is gonna be on the same application process. EDA and the federal pieces are rolling, there's no specific timeframe to submit, no. As part of the redevelopment, we would open up pedestrian trails and bike trails, which frankly is starting to happen now. People do come in here with their bikes and go up into the woods and develop their own kind of trail system. This would be more formalized, would be built, would be safe, it would have emergency phones and things like that along the route. So if anybody got hurt, they could, they could call for assistance. It would be good use of wooded, ledgy area right now that's just getting no use whatsoever. Part of it, some open space projects. Shows you a playground next to 5K Street, that playground's actually gonna go to the other side of 25K Street. Playground part of the 40, 50 Optical Drive project. And then, as I'll show you, some river access opportunities and dock opportunities. So, one thought is to get some river access to possibly kayaking in the pond. We gotta look at that from a safety perspective a little bit more. But certainly, river access allowing people to walk down and get, get close to the river. And then on the other side, the potential for a boardwalk in front of 50 Optical Drive. Where there would be viewing areas and picnic areas built into that. So the way this could get done, it, the monies that I outlined for you cannot be used for private projects. They're used for public improvements. So the concept is that we would work with the town to basically put a public easement agreement in place. That would give the town access to, but no liability for, the park. Similar, I did this in Worcester in one of my garages with Mass Works. We signed an agreement with the city that would require the garage be open to the public at all times. Which we agreed to, and that allowed us to access the Mass Works money. So this would be the same concept. The town would be the one that would be applying for the money, it would be, you know, on behalf of the town. And the town would administer and oversee the construction and use of the money. At the end of the day, liability, the roadways and the area would not technically go, be taken by title of the town, the title will stay with the private party. Giving me the responsibility of maintaining the improvements and, and meeting the requirements of the public easement agreement. But the town would take on no financial liability for maintaining and operating the park. As is currently the case now. So the benefits of the town, you know, from what we've got left to do, independent of what's already in place. A healthy stock of high quality, below market housing units, which would attach some additional growth to the area. Redevelopment would generate close to 400,000 a year in additional tax revenue. And of course, potential of some new business in the area with 35 Optical Drive. And the master plan, basically the town's gonna have, would have its own recreational park. At no cost to maintain and operate, that would be open to the public. Basically seven days a week, dusk to dawn. And the private party would be responsible for maintaining, so the town would have no costs as it relates to maintaining the park. And an opportunity with these open spaces now in public areas to do some community functions. Farmer's market, street festival, things like that. You know, we could really combine it with the common across the street. For those who don't know about that, that common used to be owned by American Optical, where the, where the town common is in the police station. And we donated that area to the town back in the mid 90s. So they could build their police station and also have a, effectively a town common. This would be basically an extension of that, that concept and that town common, so to speak. And that's it.
Thank you.
And this would require the easement agreement, which we, we've drafted, at one time the town was fine with, that would have to be adopted. And then, of course, the town's taking the assist, lead on these various funding opportunities over the next couple of years. It's a lot of money, we're not expecting it's gonna get done in one full swoop, it's gonna be a multi-year sort of approach.
Okay, Katie, would you get the lights, please? Thank you. All right, what I'd like to do is take questions from the table first and then we'll go off to the audience. So anyone at the table first, committee members that have questions, Mr. Chairman.
I just have a couple.
Counselor Matt Perry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, there's no, there's no opportunity to make use of the river? Power source or anything like that?
We've looked into, there used to be a hydro wheel in the old laundry building, which really became defunct maybe 20 years ago. So that stopped working. We've had it looked at. There may be an opportunity, it's really hard to get a permit in Massachusetts, Connecticut has been much easier. It's a very small, it's a very small component of our overall electricity consumption. We consume 11 million kilowatt hours a year in the park. And I think that water would maybe, maybe 100,000 at best. So, you know, a very small percentage of what we, we would need. So, I'm not sure from a permitting or economic standpoint, it's gonna make any sense.
And what about wind or solar?
We looked at wind, we don't, we don't have the access to the wind, we need to make it worthwhile. And we're doing, we're looking at solar now, so. Solar is a challenge in central Mass, you may know, because more solar's been built than the end grid infrastructure can handle. So any renewable energy projects are kind of on a slow track right now. So, we're probably gonna go in and approach it in a, in a phased manner. As a smaller project, get that first phase approved and then try to grow it from there. So it may not be a day one, two to four megawatts, it may be something smaller if we grow into it.
In the manufacturer area there, you've been trying to get something in there for a decade now? And haven't been able to get anyone to come into the old Arrow place at all?
The only close call we had was years ago with a laundry company out of Worcester, which is perfect. Cause they needed the steam and the hot water. They did their research and didn't think there was the employment base, they needed 200 employees, now they didn't think they were gonna get it here.
And, and no other ideas about what could go in there? I know I've spoken to you before about this, retail is like, what, no good anymore?
No, retail's not gonna work in the center of the park, you know. How's retail doing downtown?
That's true, but there are like places like Outlet, Monmouth Village Outlet.
Too far out.
Nothing like that, right?
No. No, we've looked at dead storage, not apply, I mean, believe me, I've tried everything. That's an asset that's costing me money every day, I don't want it sitting empty. That's not helpful for me, so. That's enough instead of, to understand, you know, I'm trying to develop vacant space as quickly as possible.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
And also the table, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. You mentioned power generation, you're generating power now?
Yes. They have a cogeneration plant, gas fire. Cogenration is you generate your electric, owner electricity and the waste heat you capture and use for heating and cooling. So it's not renewable, but it's considered a very green production product.
So the solar farm would be supplemented out, if you'd be selling that back to the grid?
It'd be, we sell back to the grid most likely, it's really hard to merge cogen with solar cause, cogen only works when you're running 24/7. So, it could work, I mean, we don't generate all our electricity, we generate 70%, we buy the rest. So if we could figure out how to fill a portion of that 30% with solar, we will, and we're working on that now. I'm not a expert, so I can't tell you how that's all gonna play out, but they're looking at it.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shenyu had his hand up first.
I'm, I'm sure maybe a question to pay, Mass Works grant that I believe we're gonna apply for, for the project. Does that affect any Mass Works grant that the town may apply for outside that project?
Yes, as I said earlier, on most of these funds that we're talking about, the town has access, used it before and will use it in the future. And so, you know, Jack can speak up, but basically it'll be a year to year discussion about the town, the town's priorities. And how we fit into the town's priorities and, and, and how much allocation of the money they're gonna go after would go to our project.
So, the mass grant, for instance, we have, say we have a project in New Hamilton Street, say, we applied for mass grants for that. It's not just, just because you apply for it for the, the car, doesn't stop us from applying for the Hamilton Street project, right?
Well, the likelihood that you'd be awarded two Mass Works grants in the same year is very slim. So that's why we have to, like, look at where we're at on Mass Works. So we have currently a Mass Works grant for East Main Street, that was 885,000 dollars, that's being applied to the current project that's being allocated to these, you know, the housing already. You know, that, that was FY22 Mass Works. And then we were rewarded $2 million for River Crane. So that was a Mass Works grant, and that's, that's in the process of going up to bid. So now we would have to, again, work and determine what sequence do we wanna do? You know, we already have one down in the, that section of town, we have one in the, in the Hamilton Street area. Now do we wanna look at, again, going back to this project down on Mechanic Street area? AO complex area, Franklin Realty complex? Do we wanna do a downtown project that matches in with that tip project? To enhance downtown pedestrian traffic, you know, so it's a conversation we're gonna have to have with Planning Development Town Council. To determine what sequencing we do and where does it fit in year over year.
Can you, those Mass Works grant, is it yearly grant?
Yearly, yeah.
So what it could, reapplying could change?
It can.
As, as councils are.
Right.
Okay.
And that's why we have to have an overall strategic plan of where we wanna go. And what areas do we wanna concentrate on, what sequencing. Now unfortunately, you know, we didn't get the Raze Grant down on Hamilton Street. So we do know that that's an area that we have to either work at different grants and funding. And there's only so much town funding we have, there's only so much borrowing capacity that we have. You know, we're gonna borrow money just to complete East Main Street, so we have to look at that and how it fits into our debt schedule. You know, we'll find out more on the Hamilton Street area when we do the debrief for the Raze Grant with the federal government. You know, as to whether we have to reapply or, I think it was, their, their language this year was that rolled over to a future funding. So I don't know what that exactly meant. Did that mean that in the next round, we're already there? You know, like some of these projects, like Chip was saying, you know, two, three years that you're in the loop and finally you're funded for it, you know? This was our third year probably in that Raze Grant and we built that application with more details. So, yeah. So there's a conversation we, we, we all have to have internally with the council and DPW and Planning Development and, and our private partners to see what direction we wanna go and how, how we wanna get there.
Yeah, as I mentioned, Housing Works is a relatively new funding source, it's actually the sister of Mass Works. And as I said earlier, that's to be used for just residential development. So that's, that's a narrower competitive situation with the town for that fund than Mass Works would be, which is for anything. So, we'll, we'll have those opportunities where some things fit perfectly with our project, there may not be another project in town that needs that kind of infrastructure, so.
We definitely have to look at the downtown corridor, I mean, especially when it comes to parking and opportunities that we have. You know, we have a private individual that just purchased a piece of property that's talking about potentially a parking garage there off of Central Street, you know, does, you know, which is desperately needed for downtown parking and redevelopment. You know, not so much that they're asking us to fund it, but do we do certain infrastructure improvements on that street? You know, so that's the conversations we have to have.
It was parking garage, huh? How big?
Small, a small one, but, you know, maybe a two-tier, you know, that you can have some off-street parking that would go into because we do have properties down there that have housing as well. With just private apartments, if there's not enough parking for those, you know, so how does that fit in? We have three, three, possibly a new one restaurant coming in downtown, you know, and they need parking, so. And that helps you as well as a, as somebody that has housing, you know, for people to walk in the downtown area, so.
If I may, one more question.
Certainly.
The property located behind the police station, is that part of anything in this project here to be marketed? Or is that solely?
The vacant land?
The parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, parking lot, yeah, we're marketed for retail.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Muntz, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's an interesting project. I talk about how much gets supplemented by state aid and I just don't see how it's gonna go to people making 85,000 dollars a year. But a lot, a lot of housing units, I see the, the public access to certain things and another small playground in town, more of the same that we have. I was just wondering why in such a large project, there was no real sort of outreach to children? Because like the biggest thing in this town is that the youth don't, doesn't have anything to do. And I thought maybe in such a grand project where I have all this public stuff, I mean, I don't wanna hear an argument about a playground being for children, because we have like seven of them. But, I mean, like, why not a water park or something else to that effect or anything that could be a destination for children? That's my only question. Uh, that's my only question, thank you.
Well, I don't, I can't answer a water park because I have no idea what those are. Um, we certainly can add some amenities, uh, within this development plan that would support various groups in town. So we're wide open for that discussion. You know, skateboard park, is that always around town, is there a need for a skateboard park?
There's a small, uh, a small skateboard park, uh, but we're just, uh... I'm looking for something to bring people here, not just like house more people that are struggling to get housing. Because we, we're gonna just have a town full of that and nothing for them to do. It's just gonna make even more difficult situation for our, our community to build itself. Uh, so, I was always envisioning, you know, big proponent of low-hanging fruit Amazon up the street. Uh, how come we can't bring some of their executives here? Uh, and then maybe Amazon decides to join you in, in funding, uh, projects in that area? And, and again, there's no, no, and no destination becomes available, uh, you know? And, uh, it was some time ago that there was someone, I'm not exactly sure who, who promised there'd be some sort of small water park on this property, maybe it was before you came along, I don't remember who owned it at the time, but, um...
Well, I've owned it an awful long time, so...
Somebody, somebody, uh, wishes fell through, but, you know, uh, I just was hoping that there would be some sort of destination, not just more of the, more of the same that keeps us in a rut.
Look, if there's an opportunity there, uh, I would certainly support it. That's not the business that we're in, so with the way that would work as somebody in the amusement world would say, I wanna put one of these in Southbridge and they look around and we'd probably be the right property for it. And I can't, I can't tell you if there's a market for it, that's not what I, that's not what I do.
I'm usually not in the business of using tax dollars or something like this, so I can understand how you feel.
John? What, tax dollars for what?
Products like this.
What tax dollars?
I thought you needed 700,000 of Southbridge, I'm sorry, I thought you needed some...
No, we pay 750,000 in taxes, they're the largest taxpayer.
I don't understand, but I thought you were requesting money from Southbridge at the end of the day? Because the state needs to show that Southbridge is, is giving money to you.
Right, we're doing it in a fashion where the town doesn't have to come out of pocket at all.
Well, if you, if you pay taxes, I'd see what you're saying.
No, no, I think, maybe I didn't explain it correctly.
I thought it's appropriate funds.
Gentlemen.
Gentlemen.
Uh, maybe I'm misunderstanding, uh, appropriation of funds.
No, no, it was, we are already spending 2.6 to 3 million dollars on East Main Street. Of that, it would just show on paper that those infrastructure improvements that we are doing already would be allocated as a soft match to this project. That's all it is. The only, the only higher dollar, well, the, the inspection fees were, were a dollar because we would've been able to recover it. You know, but we, we didn't. But, at the end of the day, we required Chip and them to do a third-party review, which actually they had to pay for. So it was not, I, I was hired to do it for... Yes, no, this is just shows that of this project, 700,000 of it could show benefit to those properties on, uh, K Street.
Oh, that's good, thank you, Mr. Shiny, I appreciate that. I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Shiny, your hand.
I think just maybe, I hope they've always got the water park back some time ago. But paying the council and you will kinda donate the land for a, a park across the street from the common that area they had leased and there was some discussion about it being there and all that kinda stuff. At that time, they talked about a splash park, you know, it was a park with kids from the community could go and just the sprinklers coming up and down. It's not a, an amusement park where people would pay to come in. It's a park that the neighborhood could use or residents could use to go there and cool off and those kinda things.
That wasn't my idea, but that's okay. That was, that was the town's project, you don't need a land to the town. The town was gonna decide what they wanted to grow, so...
Back to back, some...
Yeah, no, but that's, that was an us, suggested amusement park.
Any questions, Bill? Any questions at the table? Okay, I guess we're all set.
I'd like to thank, Chip, thanks for, you know, that, you know, it's important that the councils are here to get an update as to what the vision is of the park. And how we can have further discussions to work together as a public-private, you know, partners, and that's, that's how you work together.
This was excellent.
To have further discussions.
Well, thanks for the time, appreciate it, thank you. Thanks.
Yep. Alright, um, I guess we'll take a two-minute recess. Alright, we'll take a two-minute recess. Okay, I'll call this meeting back to order at 7:30, at 7:27. Here we go, agenda number five, discussion about potential Central Street upgrades.
I'll, I'll just, I'll let Chip right here, because Councillor Lazo can elaborate on it, but I think this goes hands-in-hand with the conversation that we just had.
Yep.
Alright, so that potential of what we wanna look at in certain target areas, you know, there, it's been some conversations with Chairman Lazo and DPW and others about, uh, the potential to induce some improvements from where we're at on Main Street down to where the tip project is going. We have this, you know, restaurant corridor now and that Central Street Plaza. And do we take a look at, um, using a potential for a Mass Works grant? Correct me if I'm wrong, Councillor Lazo, but I think that...
Oh, I can't, yeah, I was gonna say that.
Yeah, so, so the conversation has been, could we, could we look, um, and we could do this, uh, DPW, Rich, Rich is in here, but Rich has already had conversations with, um, VHB, who is doing the tip project right now, as to the potential to, uh, have further discussions about Central Street as a Mass Works project, uh, to do design and then, uh, apply for funding to sidewalk improvements. I'll let Councillor Lazo elaborate a little bit more of what his vision is, but we, we do see that downtown corridor as a, you know, um, we have the potential for the restaurant in the old Southbridge Credit Union building that they're building out, I believe. Correct? We have the three restaurants on Central Street and the plans right now for the vacant lot that's being developed, um, is, their, their plans are to have a restaurant on their first floor as well. So, you know, is this an opportunity, do we, we do something in that Central Street area? To, to make some changes, uh, to enhance, uh, you know, the high downtown floor? Built into that tip project as well, you know? Did I miss anything?
Six months ago.
So the microphone can get you.
The reason why I requested this to be on the agenda is that council should be directly involved in driving this agenda. Uh, as far as what do you wanna be when you grow up as a town or as a particular town or a particular part of the town? And I think we're always talking about Mass Works grants, you have people coming in looking to work together like a partnership with the innovation group. But the thing is, I, I come from a different slice of the pie. Six months ago, I walked out of Central Pizza when they opened up and I noticed there was a telephone pole every 30 feet, which we all drive by every day and say, it's Central Street. Um, we're constantly having problems coming out of Central Street, taking the right, since Mass DOT narrowed the corner. All these things, when you live in Southbridge, you drive up and down Central Street and you see the Honest Town Eats opens up and then the Central Pizza opens up and then the Mexican Restaurant where Mario's used to be opens up. The idea popped up that night that why don't we make this a restaurant district, Central Street? Make it one-way going down, eliminate the telephone poles from Main Street to the tips project and go with the lighting that we have on Main Street, the, I call it candlelight, lighting, for whiten out the sidewalks, because you're gonna be one-way going down. So you can have outside dining. I mean, in speaking with, uh, some of the business people down there, they would be willing to go with the open window concept, um, like Worcester, where they did around Polo Park. You know, you, you, you have outside seating, you have inside seating, you have doors on the buildings. We have blighted buildings down there, not blighted, but just vacant buildings. Down after Central Pizza, before Central Pizza. And my con, my idea was just to, this could be like Putnam. This could be straight down, low 18-wheel is coming up, which we've avoided by sending them to the rotary and up Main Street. But the thing is, you could add the green arrows back, the way that all the people are mumbling about on Main Street with the lights, after DOT designed that, um, we could go back to that. So, for myself, when you talk about a Mass Works grant, that is a perfect Mass Works grant. For the public, for Southbridge, so when you have people coming in, I think what we're doing down on East Main Street, you attribute those numbers to his housing project, that's not a problem. I wasn't in favor of waiving any building fees when I first got elected. I don't think we should be funding, uh, a person that is privately in business. So for myself, the reason why I wanted to bring it to subcommittee, Mr. Chairman, was I wanted to keep this in the forefront of the council, that when they're voting Mass Works grants, the way the schedule's gonna work, I think the Mass Works grant, there has to be a design, which, which is working on the design of the, uh, the Central Street area. He brought in Hamilton Street, which, again, you have a row of businesses all the way down Hamilton Street and a lot of empty stores and some fall. So I think Central Street, to me, is the main focal point for me. Um, I think we can make some great changes there that benefit the traffic, benefit the businesses. I'm not a big fan of housing, I know we need housing, I know we gotta build it, it, it will come. Uh, the investors are coming into Southbridge, buying up neighborhoods, I get it. But the thing is, there's nobody thinking on business, business, business. And I think, since, since I got on the council that's in road, sidewalk, business, I think businesses are needed. We went out and got extra liquor licenses. These restaurants could, could use those liquor licenses. And I think putting it in forefront for the council, when they do make decisions on Mass Works grants, keep this project in the forefront, this is like a priority to make. I think it should be a priority for the council. But again, it's all a matter of flavor, and I think moving forward, I mean, we have a telephone pole every 30 feet. I mean, this looks like a ghetto looking up Main Street and people are investing in the buildings, but they, the low-hanging wires, the telephone pole above building levels, it's just not a good design for your center court. And I think we have an opportunity with the Mass Works grant and some other hard work from Peggy and the Planning and Development Group that we can move forward. It's not gonna happen tomorrow, the design will take till November to BSC, will it?
Um, they would help us write the grant to get to design.
Right, but there has to be a design or, or something written up to, to apply for the grant. So I think, I've already talked to Senator Fatman and, uh, um, a state representative from Dudley and they're all excited about it. It's a great idea, we'll get behind it, 110%. I just wanna keep putting, stoking the stove on this idea because I think it's a real game changer as far as where the Southbridge wanna be when it grows up type thing. It's a change that we don't normally take on. And I think piggybacking that tips project and the rail trail going through and maybe the registry's moving out of that building and that could be a viable restaurant location. So I think in the big picture, I think we're knocking it out of the park. I just wanna continuously push that Central Street idea of one-way going down with... I, I know what it's gonna be, we haven't talked to a national grid yet, but I think once you talk to them, you get a better idea as far as these telephone poles and it just, and it is one day. They have transformers and things that they can do that probably, we wouldn't need all that, so...
You know, so that's gone.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Chair, uh, Mr. Manager.
Just to continue on the Central Street too, you're also looking at, at further down on, uh, 100th, uh, Central Street? Um, this is a, uh, entity that's going in there called Killer Classics, they were gonna do, um, restore cars, but they're also talking about putting a cafe in there, uh, and the like. Uh, and also have some plans to expand it as well, so you see that. So the building that was recently, um, I don't know if it's closed yet, but the old, the Lucio's, the tan building on the right, the one that's really an eyesore, that, that was recently purchased by a local, uh, local, uh, individual.
That's a good-sized building.
Yeah, the talk is, uh, you know, uh, what they're gonna do with it, but parking has come up multiple times because of some other developments that they have, so... But it's a local individual, it's not somebody from out of town, it's somebody that's vested in the town of Southbridge that wants to, to work with us. And they haven't approached us at all about any Mass Works, this is totally separate. It's just, if we're gonna do it, you would put curb cuts and everything in while you try to design it. So that's why maybe go hand in hand.
Councillor, okay, I see everyone, we'll start with Councillor Kelly, we'll work our way down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through, through you. I think it's a great idea, Councillor Lazo. I just, I don't know why I wanna limit it to simply Central Street. Um, I think we oughta include Hamilton Street in anything we do.
Oh, it is included.
And, and, um, uh, you know, I don't know how, which, in which direction you want to have the one-way issue. I would suggest coming into town and maybe angled parking if it would fit with expanded sidewalks. You could put benches down there for people to sit on. Um, and they would go out of town through Hamilton Street, turn that into one-way as well. I, you know, I, I think these kinda projects are what could help bring back towns. If you look at just next door, Putnam, um, and there are countless other examples of similar mill towns like ours where they have been able to brought, bring back the town talent, it was investment in some of these infrastructure projects. Also attracting, um, you know, restaurants and things, you need something down there that are, that are those gonna make, bring people in from out of town. Not just want, I mean, to, to help generate business and revenue and make it an attractive place to establish a business. So I agree with Councillor Montigny, um, earlier, who, who mentioned, uh, bringing an attraction in like a water park. I'm not sure I'd, I'd go with the water park, I'm kinda pissed. I'd be more interested in people who are gonna, who wanna spend money in town rather than kids. Um, but, um, uh, I, I, you know, these kind of investments are, are what will, what will help bring the town back along with other efforts in order to bring business into town. So I, I think it's a goo, I think it's a good idea, I think it's worth, worth, uh, uh, further development and, uh, consideration.
Mr. Chairman, uh, to the Chair, uh, Councillor Kelly, the one thing I agree with you is, we have so many good things going on. We, we just redid the whole Central Street parking lot. You have the Clemmons family building a new building where the burnout waters. You have a lot of people investing and looking, Hamilton Street is in the scope, I think, when talking with the DPW director. I think what has to happen is this tips project is redirecting a lot of roads. It's a lot of roadwork on which way everything's going. I'm open and I'm just keeping wide open on Central Street as far as if it makes more sense going one way or the other, then so be it, the study show it. But, uh, I just think that it's a perfect situation between Hamilton and, and, and Central. But the Central Street, I mean, we floated this idea, people are excited about it, they think it's happening tomorrow. It's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's gonna have to have more study, as we would say. But I think the town manager brought up a lot of points. They're all over the place in Southbridge right now, things are good, we are gonna become a destination. And, uh, instead of driving out of town to go to Denny's, become into Southbridge, again, drawing people in to spend money.
Are you all set? Thank you, Councillor, uh, Councillor Mike Eddy.
Oh, Dee Dee, I don't know.
Dee Dee had her hand up first. Ms. Lazo.
Where are we talking, a parking garage, are we talking the Martin Building, that area?
Yeah.
Okay, that redevelopment had that all at one time, that was gonna be a parking garage, so... Maybe use some of the information from then, would that?
I believe that is...
Okay. I was just curious, thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Very good, Councillor Mike Eddy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's a good idea to use Central Street that way. Um, make it a restaurant row or something like that, it's not a bad idea. Some, have you, have you given any consideration at all about completely closing down Central Street and making it a pedestrian walkway? Like, I've been to Providence, Rhode Island, where they have like one of those water fountains and people sit on the sides and they just walk, they walk that square. And, uh, it's actually quite beautiful and, and I don't know if it's something that you don't wanna completely eliminate the traffic, but I think that having a pedestrian walkway is not a bad ideal for a downtown area. The other, the other issues that I see is that, that building that the Clemmons are supposed to be building has been empty since 2016, so I don't know if somebody, what's going on with that, but I would like to see some movement.
In the, in the middle?
On that building, yeah.
I know the plans are all set, they're, they got a couple things that are moving on right now, so...
They have brought in, if you look at it, they brought in power, if you, if there's concrete vault around the power base.
I think, I think a lot of, and I won't talk to, speak for them, but I think a lot of it is being held up because of the neighbor, of their butter, who's, who needs to put a, a, um, set of stairs in the back, if you look now, they are putting steel and everything up. So I think that's part of the, the, uh,
Yeah.
could be potentially, but I'm not speaking for them, but I think in the conversation is that.
It's not a bad idea at all, I mean, there, there are, is a lot of problems down in that area, so maybe this would help clean it up. But that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to, to Counsel Mike Eddie's point, I think when you do a project, everything should be on the table, including the walking idea. I think that when you, you sit down and you look at it, you have people that have been, Central Pizza tipped off over a million dollars in that building. Wouldn't be a bad idea, and I know Jack, sit down, let's get this together collectively and look at what is in the best interest. Is it going up, is it going down, is it, get rid of it altogether? We have Foster Street, Central Street and Hamilton Street, and that Tips project is doing all types of stuff to the area. I think pushing these two streets into the, into the mix is gonna be beneficial. They would, you know, whatever it ends up being, I'm not sitting here that, I just think that the restaurant district, Putnam, Connecticut is exactly what I thought of. Cause I've been to Putnam, I said, what a great idea, it's a narrow street to begin with, porch mirror ripped off, just drive down there with a pickup truck.
Except that when I go there for dinner, it costs me sixty-five dollars.
Food's expensive today.
It is.
I just, so this gives Katie a lot now as to the new town planet to start taking a look at and working with us and the council as to some thoughts, because you know, there is a lot of thought that has to go into it, you know, if you do close out that concept, it would be a beautiful concept, but okay, what are your traffic counts, where do they go, how do they go around, what impact would that have on Foster Street that now you potentially have to put a set of lights there? So that's why you do a study.
Well, the TIP project is going all the way over to Foster Street.
Right, but then you still have to do redesign because you have to put lights there and all that.
That's the one, one thing though, I think that should be re, um, that should, should think about it again, is closing off Foster Street, because they're planning on closing it off. At the end of Foster Street?
No.
No.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes, I thought it was gonna curve into North Street.
Right. Oh, and they're gonna make you go back.
No, I, I'll double check those plans, but.
There's gonna be a light, I believe, at, at the new Larishell Way extension
Right.
into Foster Street, and Foster Street gets closed because of all the accidents that have been occurred down the.
Foster Street will get closed.
Right. So anyway, Katie, do you have anything you'd like to say as the plan?
Um, at, at this time, no, these are all exciting possibilities, and I think, yeah, the TIP project opens up some, some new things for Southbridge, so.
Great, excellent, uh, all right, which Counsel Montigny?
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, well, Counsel Lazlo, this is a great, uh, series of innovative ideas, uh, I don't know, whoever decides to call you a dinosaur or anything, but, but you know, Counsel Mike Eddie, I love the idea of the walking district here, but I think if you open up the, the sidewalks and then you are able to somehow put the lights instead of the telephone poles, it almost becomes like a, a way much safer place to walk. And then when you have lights like we're talking about, the extension to Larishell Way, I think it'll kind of still achieve the, the same kind of vision that you're having there. Uh, and, and Counsel Kelly's points are great too, you know, in Putnam, there's really nothing to do in Putnam, except eat, but everybody seems to go there. And I love it in Putnam, I know we've had little meccas to Putnam here over the years as, as a town to try to figure out what's going on. But, uh, only good things can come from this, especially since we spent so much money on that Central Street area, we were trying to have music and stuff, and if you're able to do something like this and open it up, that spot where they were trying to have music, behind, and the brand new mural next to Honest Town Eats, I mean, this is something we definitely need to keep looking into, all ideas sound great, and I'm so happy to hear that there's so many, you know, counselors that have their own uh, positive spin on this, so thank you to everybody for putting this on the agenda, I really appreciate it.
Counsel Shiny?
I think it's a great idea, we, we had some, I've had some informal discussion with Rich about making Central Street one way, but Council Lazlo's enhancement of putting the utilities on the ground and putting up the candlestick light, I think it's a great idea. Uh, the biggest thing was when we first talked about Central Street being one way, was would it affect the TIP project? And we didn't wanna stop that project from happening any longer because we're within the, the ability of losing the money. And Peg checked into, I think with VHB and all that, and it won't affect it at all because the intersection is gonna be lighted. And so making it one way is just a matter of configuring the lights.
Right.
Uh, the thing that Rich did say was that making one way coming down, the advantage it is for the town of coming down is that the trailer trucks that come up Central Street would be diverted to Mechanic Street to Main Street. Because returning of, uh, trailer trucks going up, they jump the curb and those kind of things. Coming off of Main Street into Central Street, they make that drive much easier. And the Hamilton Street he suggested would be one way, the other way. And we had concerns with the peanut island that they were gonna be building there, and again, VHB said it would be no, no, uh,
Right.
And, and with them turning, being like going from the, uh, where the project, Hiker's Monument is to Main Street, where the Conby's is, the trucks, the turn radius is, is much easier there. The problem is Central Street, where the trucks coming in from Main Street and going into from, I mean, from Central Street onto Main Street. It's a messed up, they jump the curb, they go on the wrong sides of the road to drill trucks and they do. But it's a great idea to listen and to see, maybe the ideas can come about. I think it's great to put it underneath, the utilities underneath, like make it a restaurant district, an entertainment district. And I think it's, it's the beginning of the revitalization of our community that we much, we much need. And I agree with, uh, with Counsel Kelly is that, you know, what's that look for adults, you know, kids don't spend money, adults do. So we're limiting the pool. You can bring the kids, you can feed them, you could, uh, feed the adults, and we're right to revitalize our town.
Very good. Mr. Cody, do you have anything else to say? Very good. Okay. Uh, Counsel here.
I was having dinner and I was talking about this idea, and a person says, you can't do that. And I turned around and I looked and I stole your line, why not Southbridge? And they looked at me like, I love when people say you can't do it, so it's kind of a challenge.
I think that, uh, that we've reached a point where we're in a very fortunate situation where we have a number of potential projects going on in town. Not just potential, but actual projects that are gonna be starting, um, you know, there's gonna be projects at the Innovation Center. We're talking about projects downtown now. I suspect that there'll be further discussions either in P and D or in council the whole, um, to discuss what's coming down, because we do, we do need to make decisions about where we want to go in the next five years or so. And, and, and we shouldn't, I, just as one word of caution is we shouldn't be limited in our scope. We should be broad in our scope, why not Southbridge, why not think a big picture and see how we can perhaps fit the puzzle pieces together, um, you know, people may not be happy because things aren't happening instantaneously, but if there's a schedule as it were, that we have worked out and a plan over the next five years as to where we want to go, what we want to apply for, uh, where we think we can go. So with the help of the, um, Economic Development, uh, Department, um, council having input at meetings like this, um, I think there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, good fortune coming Southbridge away. I think this is really good, so the only thing is, is I think we've got, we've got a bigger cake than we realized, and, you know, one bite at a time. That's it, Mr. Cody.
Yeah, one of the biggest things we have to do to, you know, we wanna bring people in. Well, we wanna stop the discouragement of them not coming in because of our roads.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, we started, Rich is, get a good plan, we're getting the roads done and stuff, but we're going that way.
Mm-hmm.
And I was going down the road the other day, I felt, I hit a manhole, I didn't tell him when a pickup truck came off. Busted and so. There's some of them, it falls around the super manholes in Viola's, and I was running, I was like, what was, are we gonna be able to go out to Viola or not moving up to their contract something? But that's another subject. Uh, I hope we can keep the roads being improved to really want people to come to town, because a lot of people have said, oh, you know, I'm stopping, you know, that the roads are so bad, it's on there. And it's true, the roads are so bad in town.
You're right, but the council in the last couple of years has addressed that we started, you know, five or six years ago with authorizing the bond. We're just tipping into the bond, we're not spending it all at once, we're using it only as we have to, as a stopgap measure. And, uh, Rich Benoit has been wonderful in terms of putting a road program together. Councils have come up with suggestions as to what roads should be addressed, and everyone, of course, wants their road done. Uh, but some roads need to be done more so than others. Again, one, one bite at a time, it's a big cake.
I would say we're just gonna keep at that, that's.
That's right, and I don't, I don't foresee any council in the near future, uh, putting roads to the side. I think that roads are gonna be a, a very strong issue for the foreseeable future for the councils in the future. Mr. Manager.
A quick point, just 'cause people watch these meetings. We're awarding a close to three million dollar project for East Main Street. We just awarded a million dollar project to do dentising and a bunch of other side streets. We just got, well, a potential for North Street, Mechanic Street, that whole area on another million dollars. We have a, what, two million dollar TIP project that's starting next year for the Mill Street Bridges. We also have next, starting next year, the seven million dollar TIP project for all the downtown product. So I think in the next year to year and a half, two years, we're gonna be close to ten million dollars worth of road projects that can be done in this town. And the complaint I get right now is, well, I can't get it from here because everything's going with NewCo and we've addressed it. And Rich has been very diligent as far as with NewCo saying.